It was great.
It was great. The kids, the kids are still talking about.
We have a fun, uh, which is like already a mayor. Whatever your name, but the last name.
Great. Thanks for being rude.
Well, thank you. A neighbor whose last name is Ruth?
Root, like a blueberry tree. And she said she plays.
Oh, my gosh.
Oh, but look, I'm being hard on reading. You should have been reading what that is.
Oh, it's a losing game.
Yeah.
You can hardly lose it.
She's my neighbor.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
So they have had beautiful, have red feathers on.
Oh, okay. Yes, it's a. Uh, Jane, I think Jane.
Sir, there's words in there.
She's living right.
I think so.
I was trying to get.
All right.
That's quite a drive.
Okay, everybody. This is the hybrid meeting, the city council. Members of public opinion. On five, on channel eight, the city's website, YouTube. Live Spanish translation services are be provided for tonight's county meeting by telephone. Please dial seven two zero three eight six nine zero two three and use code one zero four zero nine one. I will now call the study session to order. As a reminder, per Bob's rule order, remember members write for it limited five minutes on any, any, at any time. Remember may say may obtain for only once until all members have. You have an opportunity to obtain for. And we'll be monitoring the time along their protect. Thank you. First presentation tonight is, uh, second quarter E three. It's got energy equity and environment. Update will invite Dr. Rosemary Russell. Sustainability manager present. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, before I start, I just wanted to introduce the, uh, energy equity environmental team. And so we have Libby Tartt joining me and Olivia as well. Um, tonight we're gonna, I'm gonna go over, you know, an update of our projects and policies. But I also wanted to say that even though we're a small division, we also serve on the diversity committee, the wellness committee. We manage the sustainability team, um, EPAC, which one of our members are here this evening and in an internal and external water department. I mean, what are they?
Water team.
Water team. And. So again, uh, what I'm gonna, um, give you an update about tonight, some of the grants, some of the projects that we're working on, some of the data that we've been, um, tracking and then our engagement activities. And a really quick, uh, update on Suncor. So, uh, for this reporting period, there was five events and eight exceedances, one of which we discussed at the last, um, monthly update. There was also a, um, a notification from Philip sixty-six. And so it was Philip sixty-six, um, actually has fence line monitoring plan. And it's the first time there was a notification from them on July third. And it was about, um, hydrogen cyanide, which they don't have at their facility. So the state is investigating that. So again, these are our ten, uh, sectors that we work in, education and empowerment, energy efficiency, adaptation, conversion, water conservation, active transportation, well-being, funding, uh, food resiliency and tree canopy. So I'm gonna start with our funding. So I think our biggest accomplishment from this quarter was that we submitted a seventeen million dollar grant application. That was the community change grant. Um, the lead partner was Brown and Black Parents United Foundation, and we're the statutory partner. We also, um, involve fourteen different partners. So we have educational partners, we have health, um, agency partners. And so in addition to, um, coordinating the application, we also coordinated fourteen different nonprofits. And so it was a, a large undertaking. Uh, we had to develop five plans. So within six months, we developed a climate action plan, a pollution reduction plan, the community engagement, a readiness plan and a compliance plan. And, uh, the criteria that the city will be evaluated on is, is this community driven? Is there investments in the community? Um, are we ready to do it? So do we have some shovel ready projects? And then, um, that was all part of the written application. And then if you score above a certain point category, then we'll be asked to come back and do an oral presentation. And I'm assuming that's maybe in the, um, fall. So we're, we're starting to prepare for that. So it was submitted on, on a Saturday, June twenty-second. Um, we did get feedback from EPA that they thought the application was, um, strong. Um, and so that was great. We have a BPuff has a, uh, technical assistance, um, grant that they could provide us with some, you know, just high level, um, impressions of the application. And they were really positive, so. So again, this is the area, it's Commerce City and then also Aurora. And then this is the sort of big picture. So there's five main areas of the grant. And the first one is, um, restoring soil, looking at infill and when I, and looking at, um, like ground fields, looking at things like medians. Um, and so it's about trail restoration, putting in greenhouses, um, and community gardens. And so then, then the second part is about, um, accelerating solar. So big community scale solar, solar on, uh, city buildings, uh, solar canopies, solar on some private, um, properties. So we basically just said, we want to get to two megawatts of solar. That's roughly sixteen acres. And so we didn't, we, we just gave them a rough outline of facilities that we've started to judge dating. And the third part is that workforce development. And so it'll be a total of ninety people. Over three years, thirty people a year, fifteen will be high school students and fifteen will be adult learners. And so the first year it would be like solar technicians will pay for them to take the national solar exam. And then if they pass, we will hire them part-time for five months. And then the second and third year, it's the same thing. It's high school and adults. Um, and that one is on restoration, it's on, um, horticulture, it's on urban ag. And so, and it's the same thing, we'll have an exam. Um, and then if they can pass it, it's a part-time stipend for several months. And so we're, we're working with DU, we're working with Front Range. And the idea is the high school students can get AP credit for it. Um, the fourth part is the, um, health study. So it's a health study of cumulative effects of living near, um, in Aurora, living near active oil and gas wells in our area. It's within a certain radius of Suncor and that is close to a hundred families. The families have multiple members as part of the study. Uh, the study is like a blood study biomarker study, um, and that will occur over nine months. And it's also interventions. So it'll be, you know, looking at a family, say somebody has a respiratory issue, go in, we have different air filters, um, air purifiers. So it's not just studying their health, but looking at different interventions that we can do to improve their health. Um, and then the last one is community-led training and policy. That one is more on, um, Bee Puff, Bee Puff's, um, side of house. But that's to, after we have this information about community of health and air quality, it's helping people understand how they can impact the political system. So still in the area of grants, we are still working on the healthy, well, we're starting to work on the healthy homes. We're soliciting families, um, that wanna be involved with the healthy homes. And then we also got a Water Now, uh, grant that Libby's gonna talk about, um, in a few slides. Um, we started to work on another IRA grant. And that is about, um, tree canopy and training tree stewards and having events similar to the ones we've done at like Pioneer Park. So over the last two years, we've, um, had four events. We put in eighty trees, um, fruit trees. Um, and so, and those events are really, they're really fun. They're family events. We work with a few nonprofits, um, wildland, wildland restoration volunteers. And so that's to continue that work and then also to do a, uh, tree canopy for the city. Um, because right now we have data on select parks, but we don't have a community-wide tree canopy. So we need to get that like baseline data. And then we've started to talk a little to Adams County. They want to do a community change grant as well. They're not sure of what their topic is yet. And so we, um, may support them in that endeavor. Um, one of the awards, so we have gotten some awards as well. And so this one, uh, was an award that, uh, Olivia put together the application and we received a bronze level. It's about, um, educating people about electric vehicles, um, like promoting webinars, um, and then having, um, the infrastructure at your facility. Then we're also working again, last year we got an award, a bronze level from the Colorado, uh, Green Business Network. And last year we just looked at the civic center, but this year we're trying to, um, get a higher level and we're looking at other facilities. And really the award is not so much to get an award, but it's to manage our, um, water use and our energy use and our waste. And so it's getting all this information into a database that we can more easily track our progress or see if things are going outside of like, you know, a certain water use. If we see that it's going up past this, you know, sort of baseline amount, then we know maybe there's a leap or maybe there's something we should adjust. And so it's to help us really manage our, um, our facilities, not just our buildings, but the landscaping as well. And then in terms of education and engagement, there's continued interest in the mindful movies and our monthly challenges. We have the book club. And so, um, for the second quarter, we had close to four hundred people come to our events and our year-to-date is, um, getting close to a thousand. So eight hundred seventy-nine. And the behavior change, again, this is something that helps us, um, calculate our impacts or our environmental and social and environmental impacts. So these are just strategies that staff can do or, uh, community members. And so we have all these cards out at the rec centers. Um, and then people try them and then they're entered into a prize drawing and we calculate the cumulative effects. So again, um, these are the areas that, uh, the sectors that, you know, the, the challenges. So each month is a different, um, topic. So it could be water conservation, transportation. Um, and so last year and this year we had nine hundred and sixty-one. And then this quarter we had two hundred and fifteen people participate. And then we can calculate out how much, like they've saved up close to twenty-four thousand dollars. And, you know, that, that's the water savings, um, in the table. And then in parentheses is our, um, last year and this year cumulative impacts. Um, and then the other sectors, um, this one sort of crossed over between well, well-being and transportation. So we partnered with Anything Library and the Greyhound Park. And so they have a bike share. So we helped them with getting safety equipment, getting some repurposed bikes, um, with some signs about people driving more slowly around these areas. Um, we also helped Republic on their grant application. So Republic last, uh, last year applied for a grant to get electric vehicles and they got five trucks. And then last week or about two weeks ago, they submitted an additional grant to get more electric, um, trucks. And then, um, back to anything and, um, also, uh, the empowerment project, we assisted them in expanding their gardens. So Anything Library, if you haven't seen it, they have different plots of like, uh, vegetable gardens and fruit gardens. So we came down and helped them with soil and plants and, uh, mulch. And the same thing for the empowerment project. They had a lot of, uh, very high planters. So we came down and helped them, um, put those gardens in. And the next sector is water and I'm gonna turn it over to Libby.
Sure. So, um, so we, this is a matter that we probably haven't, um, discussed at our Q, um, updates to y'all. But we are in charge of, of dealing with water, um, and interfacing with the South Adams Water and Sanitation District. And so one of our roles is to conduct, um, bi-monthly water team meetings with internal staff of Commerce City and then reporting that out to a water committee with South Adams Water and Sanitation District and discussing those matters as a team of staff contact. And then taking that forth to a three times a year water commission meeting where, um, we have council one, Mayor Pro Tem Noble and the mayor on the, that water commission along with other staff resources and two, um, two of the water districts appointed representatives. So we can talk about matters that are relevant to the city and to the district and, and just have a forum to discuss those items on, in a, in a useful manner, but also in, um, in a collective manner where we can, we can, um, do our level best between the district and, and us as employees. So we've conducted a bunch of those meetings over the course of the spring. Um, and then we liaise with the water district on matters of, of just general questions, on matters that, um, that they may have, where they need some planning topics, um, explained to them and that sort of thing. So we've been able to, um, to develop just a better level of communication with, between the district and ourselves. Um, they have also invited us to tour some of their facilities, which we really enjoyed. Um, we did kind of a guinea pig tour of called the cost of water. So, um, just going and going behind the chain link and, um, and driving down gravel roads to see where our water comes from on the South Platte and in the Fulton Ditch. Um, so a few of us were invited to do that and kind of debut it. And I'm sure they'll offer that up to all of you in the near future. But it was really fascinating and some of the, the photo in the upper corner is, um, is from that tour. Um, we've also gone to a garden in a box analysis with Resource Central, who is a partner with the water district. Um, they do slow the flow and irrigation analysis and, um, but the garden in a box is a program that we're interested in debuting as the city, um, in the near future, once we, um, as we go through ZERI amendments and other assorted, um, kind of water-wise presentations for y'all. Um, and then I, we attended a watershed summit that just talked about kind of the innovations that are going on with water resource management. It was put on at the Denver Botanic Gardens, um, and Denver Water and a few other partners were a part of that along with an alliance at, um, Metris. We are also a part of the ZERI amendment that will be committal for you next week. Um, so we'll be staffed for part with that. And, um, and then one of our roles is to also provide environmental comments based on the sustainability action plan um, in every development application that comes into the city. And so the, this is how many, um, we have, we have conducted over the course of, um, the, the time that E three has been a division. So it's a little over about a hundred projects, a hundred and ten projects where we provided comment. Um, and a lot of this comment, you know, is, is suggestions. Um, they're, they're not mandates. If they are part of the land development code, we reinforce those messages to the developers. But, um, but there are, um, some applications that we've flagged that need to go to our greater agencies and partners, um, like Adams County Health and, um, and Estate and EPA. So, um, so our, we have done fifty-two projects in twenty twenty-three and, um, up until the end of Q two. It's been forty reviews, um, in that facet.
And we also try to provide resources to them. And so if they had an interest in EV, we'll send them, you know, rebate information. And after our last, um, meeting, we did work with communications to, to set up separate pages for like business and residence, have resources for each of those groups. And so, um,
Um, so some of the comments, for example, that we make are about enhanced bicycle parking. Um, in particular at multifamily residential, um, buildings that are coming into the city, low water, just making sure that you are cognizant and aware of how much water you're using and projecting with your project. Um, because we're the ultimate authority that kind of reviews that and, um, and prices it out with the water district. So, um, if they can, if they can use particular types of plant material that are more native or less irrigated, then that's gonna save them their pocketbook as well as, um, just water savings for the city. And then, um, EV infrastructure, charging stations, just kind of saying, put the conduit in, you know, put the electrical in so that it's, it's ready in, in case your project needs a, um, additional bus stops. And just kind of advocating for additional bus service where it's practical and, um, and also urging our applicants to check in with RTD and see if there's additional bus services that might be provided to some of these newer areas of the city. Um, making sure that the bus stops are improved as well. And then we issue comments of concern where, um, you know, where there may be some concerns about artificial turf, which I know it's coming before you next week, so I'm not gonna speak too much on that. Um, but some of, we, we are, our next matter is engine idling. And so we've been putting in comments and threads about engine idling and just telling people, hey, um, it, it would be really great for our air quality to turn your vehicle off or to minimize the interactions where you need to keep your vehicle on all the time. And, um, and several of our developers have actually clarified things for us, which has been really enlightening. Um, a truck, trucking operation that's expanding. We've, y'all might have, it may have just gone to, um, planning commission in the last week. But, um, they, they actually said our trucks that are in our stops shut off after five minutes. So they're following the statewide rule, um, which was, it was very great and enlightening to us to see that. Um, we've also acknowledged plugged in abandoned oil and gas wells. Um, a lot of surveyors don't always catch them. And we do have legislation that says you have to provide a buffer, um, around these areas and that it need, we need awareness of these. Um, and then just, just general water capacity, infrastructure concerns. So, um, uh, you know, PZ forty-one is something that I know is on everybody's radar and, um, and just checking in and making sure that the water infrastructure isn't really planned. So we've had some wins, um, when we make comments. Um, we have some really great discussions with developers just about general, general things that they'd like to do as well that are best practices. So we feel, we feel like with, you know, our interactions have been really, for the most part, very positive. And, um, and we're learning along the way.
Thank you. And council members have questions for? Sam, Rocky. Councilmember Teeter.
Okay. I have some concerns about, uh, water and, uh, the metro sewer.
Okay.
And, uh, at one o'clock in the morning, two o'clock in the morning, it stinks so bad up on I two seventy that it makes your eyes water. And I don't know if they're just waiting till after hours before they're dumping them down the river or if it's the time when they agitate it to treat it. But either or, it stinks. I hope they're not dumping them down the river at those hours. And I'm curious if we have any monitors up to check at that time of day or that time of the morning.
No, we don't, but we could.
And I've also gotten complaints on the weekends. It stinks extra bad at that time of the morning. And, and so it sounds to be like just that they're after hours when they're thinking nobody's checking, they're dumping right through our district.
So we do have that grant with, um, Adams County that we're putting air monitors in different places. Actually, we were putting one in this week at Anything Library, so that we could put in an odor line.
Would that pick up the smell of urine? And does it have to be some toxic chemicals?
No, it, uh, it picks up. It's, it's about pH, so it's really, it's not particularly urine, but it's like a.
It's a, it's definitely a urine.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, like when you go down around brush and stuff and they're treating, I'm down there, smelled like crap. But, but this is urine.
Okay.
And, uh, and it's bad. And it may be just be their scheduling, that's when they agitate it and, and start moving it to process it. I don't know.
Okay.
Or, but anyway, the way you look at it, the smell shouldn't be that bad. It's bad. That's all I have.
Okay, night, did you get it night and what was the other time you said?
It didn't time from one o'clock to three o'clock in the morning.
Okay. We will follow up with that.
And the weekends.
And get back.
And holidays.
Okay.
And so it looks to me like it's that they know when we're working and when they know when we're not.
Yeah, those are nice. Those are continuous twenty-four seven. So we just put them up and then we could, you know, we'll look at that time in particular and see if there's any spikes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford.
On that, um, comment, Rock, uh, that might be when they're releasing some of their effluents into the water. Might be more of a water monitoring thing as well.
Oh, yeah.
Because, um, you know, that's a sewage treatment plant and it could be when, you know, they, they are agitating it, like you said, or aerating it um, in, in some of their, um, processed. But it does, it does stink and it does stink at certain times of the day. But I know there are a lot of certain release to the river. But if it's stinking at that level, then it could be exceeding those releases. And having Denver's wastewater treatment facility right up against I two seventy. People think that's the Commerce City statement. It's not.
Sure.
It's Denver.
Yep.
Yeah, they were, you know, we put together that list of like the highest like NOCs and SOCs and VOCs, they were on that, um, that list. So we could follow up to it CD-PHE and see if there's any violations they know of.
Thank you. That's our show.
Um, I'm getting a lot of outreach for workforce development. Um, Marsha Nelson, or sorry, Marsha, yeah, Marsha Nelson from SIDA is looking at Adams fourteen as potentially as like school, but they wanted to connect with EPAC and the school district and the city. I just got that email today. But, um, also Mark Belkin from Green Schools is also looking to work with the city and projects to, uh, essentially create more workforce development with public schools and they're looking at Commerce City. So I can loop all of us in. And then Groundworks Denver, I just sent the email right now too, and I already got a response from the city manager. But they're, um, trying to also with, um, landscaping and tree scape and native plants. Um, they're offering stipends for volunteers to come and replant, but they're also coming to Commerce City to plant trees and irrigation and everything for Commerce City residents and the IC communities. So I don't really have a question, but those are just all a bunch of resources that I know are coming as well. And then we'll be working, I think, with either Epic or Brita to supply water filters with South, um, Adams Water District and Adams County Health Department pretty soon throughout Denver. So the first event should be in September.
Okay, great. And we'll get in touch with you because at, uh, the events we're doing all summer, we have a, well, it's on the website, but we also have a like a, you know, a sign-up sheet. And at Music at the Park, we, we had a, a number of families, um, indicate that they, they would like either water filters and/or air filters. And so we, we're starting to get that list.
We'll be doing, I think, air filters with, um, I love my air color, or yeah, Denver, pretty soon. And I think there's gonna be an event there at the end of August. So I'll get all those flyer gates, but I did four of the last two for emails. I just barely got everybody's phone, you can tell I'm back to work today. So I'll forward you all those info.
Yeah, so our healthy homes grant that we have, um, that covers air filters as well. And so we're, we're in, in better shape for the air filters and the water filters, but, um, we'll have, we can, we'll have them both covered. I think between.
Sweet. Um, yeah, the Brita ones is literally like the stipends that we could send to people's homes. So if they're okay with giving us an email or they're already on the list, it's like, it's easy, I could just. And that'll be going on for like a year. No questions, thank you.
Any other council members have any questions? Any other councilmembers have any questions? First, Sam. Mayor Pro Tem Noble.
So I'm ready for someone. Um, thank you very much for all that you're doing. I think we're making great strides in this area. Far more than was the case when I first came on the council four years ago. So thank you very much for that. Um, I am a little concerned to see on the, on the list of development projects that you listed Xeric on, I think, the left-hand side as as if we're making comments. Was that? Are we making comments about Xeric? Advocacy comments and development review? Because what is that based on? What Xeric plants are you basing that on that we have approved as a city council?
So we we do have an approved plant list.
Could you speak up?
Oh, yes. So we have, we have an approved plant list that's out of the planning division, out of community development. Um, and it has not been revised in some time, but it it indicates what the types of watering are for that approved plant list. So there's a low, you know, which is more Xeric or native friendly, and then a moderate, and then a high. And so a lot of our developers, we we would like for them in their landscape plans to list out that plant material and indicate what type of watering schedule it will have so that you pair all the irrigation together so that it's, it, you know, it it's zoned appropriately. Um, and and so that's where we're coming from is the the current plant list. Um, we will be coming to you next week with some additional um amendments to that plant list. But um but we have had an approved plant list with with low water and Xeric plant materials in there.
I am very concerned that these are moving forward without um any particular uh direction from the city council. Um, I have not seen good examples from developers who actually have the money and the wherewithal to do good work. So outside the um storage units at a hundred and twentieth and Chambers, the Xeriscap, um, you know, some perennials are one person's weeds and weeds are another person's perennials, but these are weeds that are covering this entire section. And I could just see someone saying, no, we're doing Xeriscaping. This is the watering we've agreed to and just allow that kind of plant material to take over that you might find on the field across the street in Buffalo Run East, or the villages of Buffalo Run. Then the other is on um a hundred and fourth of Walden. Um, that's Xeriscaping on the south side of uh a hundred and fourth was mowed down finally after complaints from residents who live in the duets. Uh, however, it's growing back. And these are not plants that would be on any Xeriscaping list. They are the um those strange, very dark brown.
Pearly dock.
Yeah, you know, they
Called everlasting heart, yeah.
They have, they have taken over every empty field that there is. There have to be some sort of invasive plant, but that isn't what people who spend six hundred thousand dollars on a home want to see in front of their yard. So we're, as a city, allowing Xeriscaping that shouldn't be, shouldn't be allowed. I only have fifty-four seconds, so I need to move it.
I did, but they're answered.
Pardon me?
They they answered during that period, it went to, so.
Yeah, well, you know what? The rule is that that that's inclusive, that five minutes is inclusive. It could rotate. It can come back to me and I can pick up where I left off. But but that is, that is a concern to me. Also, people are, uh, developers are still planting maples in the right of way. They do not live in reunion or these other new development projects. They simply don't live. And then we all have to replant or call in um specialists to try and keep these maples alive. Everybody loves a maple, but there's a reason. The teams are called the Maples in Illinois, and they're not called the Maples in Colorado. You, we just don't have the right climate for it. Um, so I'll continue with the rest of my comments after the rest of the people have spoken. I'm at five minutes.
Councilmember Douglas.
Just want to say thank you, um, especially for going after uh some a very substantial grant. I can only imagine how much work that was. And to do that um above and beyond your call for what your job requires is to be committed. And I want you to know that the citizens of the city appreciate that 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 you've partnered with right people to uh have the best chance of of getting this money. And it will be money that will take us in the right direction. So I just want you to know how um appreciated you are for doing that.
I'm so excited about the schools. So there's like, in addition to the collegiate level, there's, you know, it's Adams fourteen, it's Stead, it's twenty-seven J, it's Victory Crossing. And so, you know, it it'll be really exciting to like, you know, work with those schools and get the next second and third generation.
Yeah.
You can have a real division of thirty people, which is what could use here.
Oh, anyway, I'm waiting to let you know that you're appreciated for for um stepping on in the water and and doing all the work that went with it as well. And I am just praying that we get that.
Thank you.
Yeah, councilmembers. Yeah, for a second round there, Mayor Pro Tem Noble.
You want to take your turn?
I'm last, but.
All right, all right. Okay, hang on a minute while I get set up again here.
I got you.
Okay. Um, I wanted, uh, Conoco Phillips is across the street from Suncor, isn't it? That's where their storage tanks are. And they have to do um fence line monitoring now also. And I believe Sinclair, which is on ninety-sixth. Um, while that's Henderson, it is Commerce City. And I think a lot of people don't realize that we have another facility in Commerce City. It's right there by Highway eighty-five and ninety-six. That is um a problem. Um, Suncor got another notice of violation today. I think that's important to make note of. Um, uh, they just settled the fine in uh February. They paid ten point five billion, but they've already been found in violation again for not meeting uh federal or state standards.
I did print it out. It was a hundred and forty pages, so I didn't read it before this meeting, but I have it. And it's, so in addition to like permit violations that uh cites uh the Air Quality Act and the Colorado Air Pollution Prevention Act and the State Implementation Plan violations. So um it's a, it it's, well, we talk about at these monthly meetings, but it's additional um regulations and violations.
Yeah, and I think it's really important because, you know, if I was a neighbor and there was something going on at a house and maybe a couple of kids were having trouble and three of the kids weren't, I might begin to worry, even if the majority of the kids were doing okay. So I think it remains incumbent on the city and incumbent on the city council to be keeping track of um an industrial company of that scale in Commerce City and its impact on our neighbors. So I will continue to monitor that and I will continue to speak out on it, no matter um what anyone says. That's my job. Um, and finally, speaking of which, advocates and um the brain power and the people power that we have on the environmental policy advocacy committee. Um, uh, Councilmember Douglas and I have talked about this at length over the past few months. And we really want to see it beefed up. So we're going to be working on another resolution for the city council to look at. Um, I I had wanted it to be called Epic and Councilmember Douglas um ingeniously said, oh, innovation, that's what we need. Exactly. Innovation, we need environmental policy and innovation and make it a commission, just like senior commission, um, any of these other groups so that they know that they're, uh, I was reading the resolution. It says that they are to be invited to speak to us. They are the only organization that that says that in Commerce City. The resolution says they are to be invited. They can't just do it. They have to be invited by the city council. So we need to clean up some of the language on that because this is a high priority for our community. It certainly people associate Commerce City with certain industries. And um we need to do our part in um changing the image of Commerce City and doing all we can to help our residents. Thank you.
Councilmember Teeter.
And when they uh, when Suncor had your violation, I understand it was from a power outage?
Several of those exceedances are power outages.
It was that kind of Excel Energy's fault or was that Suncor's fault for the power outage?
That's not in the report, but.
Does that make a difference?
It does, because if it's a startup shutdown, that 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 doesn't count as a violation.
Well, when the power goes out, they have to shut down or the pumps shut down, so they have to reroute it
Yeah.
and send that stuff to the flare so that it forsakes it. So we wouldn't think they'd get fined for that.
Right, so they they have to report it and then, you know, there's usually like thirty to forty-five days where CDPHG looks. And there's exemptions from the violation. So if it's startup shutdown, if it's a um a malfunction.
They have different standards for startup and shutdown.
Yeah, so there's
On just normal operating.
Right, so there's eight different codes and that's why they 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 post it and then they do a little QC and.
Okay, that's a good question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Shukon.
Oh, just sorry. Just to clarify, you said that it went against the state implementation plan. So is that another SIP? So that'd be like an eighth SIP that will be going over?
So the violation was uh things that are within the SIP that they had violated.
Yeah, okay. And then um, I think it falls to Suncor because I know that their settlement went for them to update their electrical infrastructure for exactly the power up. So I think that they're actually liable for the electrical system because that's why they were fined.
Yeah, so that ten point five million on fine eight went to upgrading equipment and having one backup generators. And so, you know, two point five went to the Environmental Justice, but eight million went to 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 try to address that, you know, a facility that large.
I I know they got backup generators, but there's a pause there. When the power goes out, it takes a while for it to fire up.
Yeah, this month, I think, out of the eight, I think like four of them were power removed.
Okay. Councilmember Douglas.
So I wanted to take uh just a minute to recognize how committed the um committee members are and what a wealth of professionalism on in that group. It's it's just amazing uh the um um their backgrounds and what they bring to the table, but where they are, they are definitely committed uh to this and I wanted to recognize them. I also wanted to thank you for your presence at Music in the Park. It's very impactful. So thank you for doing it. Um, will you be participating in Culto Ongo's Equal Fiesta this year?
Absolutely.
Wonderful. Do you, do you happen to know the date?
Uh, yeah, it's uh next Saturday, July twentieth.
And that will be at um my name in the park just escaped me. No, not Pioneer Park. It's um
It's the same one as last year.
By Fair Fets, yes.
Fair Fets. I know it's ten to two.
And you wouldn't have to have the times too?
Ten to two.
Ten to two. I sound silly going to do that. Thank you so much. Um, again, uh, um, it takes extra work to commit to those events. So the fact that that you're doing them and you need to have a presence is uh to be committed. Thank you.
And we're translating a lot of the questions because last year we tried to translate them on the spot and uh it was a little difficult. And uh, and we changed some of the questions too. I uh, they were a little too academic, so we're making a little more uh relatable. And and trying to promote our programs as well. Like, we were really going to push for the Healthy Home um resources. And so we've, we've switched up a little bit.
Be spreading the awareness. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, um, I had a question. I know you were, were, uh, wanted to train people on trees and all that, as far as tree canopy. But I think we need to have harvest, some arbor, harvests in the city. In fact, you keep the trees we have. We have a lot of trees that are dying. And and the soil conditions, whatever it is, we need that. That's really important because it takes a long time. We have trees right now that are um, the other house is twenty years old. They're pretty tall. And then other house seventeen. And then there's actually down the parkway where the trees actually come together only in certain spots. Go take care of trees. And that requires a lot of, a lot of time and patience. And um we talked about, uh, Councilmember Teeter brought up the wastewater treatment. I would like to see Commerce City, along with EPA, the state, Denver, change that facility so it doesn't smell. They can process, uh, they can process solid waste where they freeze it, zero smell. I was able to, when I went to Los Angeles, there was a water treatment plant in the Santa Monica Pier. And right now, it used to, well, it used to be the, it was uh one mile, they would um actually um process them, whatever's left over, there's israel and dispose of it in the ocean. Now they have to go out three miles to the ocean to do the same thing. But their facility exactly is really zero smell. We drove around the facility and actually freeze solid. And so that could happen here. I mean, I I think that our our uh, our city should have that because down in the south, people dealing with the that smell. Uh, it's not just Suncor, but that facility over too. So they 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 really should change that process. That would help a lot of people. We we need to change our image and and actually be more innovative when it comes to industrial. The industrials we have here need to be more innovative of how they process. I had an meeting with Suncor. And 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 they said that's the worst producing plant refinery in in the country, and they know it. And they wanted, they want to do better. I think we should help them with that process. Um, the other thing would be working with the water district to actually change their AMI meters out. So they actually detect the leak and shut off, not wait until a customer gets a bill that's hundreds of dollars. And then they're saying, hey, what happened, right? So I mean, that, I've been to a a lot of different functions around the country. And where they're at, a lot of these places, they're now, today, where they have these AMI meters in and they detect leaks. Saves saves them money as well, too. No one wants to have the water, you know, when it comes to leakage and all that. They, on both sides of the rivers, not have the water leak as far as concerning water. And I just want also appreciate what you guys are doing because it's it's a lot of work. It's not something you just show up, that's it. So knowing what you guys are doing behind the scene before it comes to us in those quarterly meetings, that's a lot. So I I appreciate that.
You know, when we put the AMI in up in Fort Collins, the first week, we found this a huge leak in the natural areas department. And uh they would have never, it would have been a month. And uh it was, yeah, I forget how many gallons, but you know, it paid itself back in like the first week they put them in.
Absolutely.
So for the city.
They got one minute left here. So on the Xeriscaping on the plants, it is the amount of money that goes in and you want those plants to last. I mean, we have plants in our backyard that are drought tolerant. They've been there for years. It takes very, very, very small amount of water and and they love the heat. So you're next up on the anti-idling ordinance discussion. So, you're next up on the anti-idling ordinance discussion.
Along the round. I don't see her, uh.
Um, go back to the uh, PDF. There you go.
Thank you.
So go down to the third to last button on the right. Oh, 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 sorry, PDF, so third to last, uh, right there. Go to full screen mode.
Thank you, sir. All right, switching gears uh, to the anti-idling ordinance. So the anti-idling ordinance, it was part of the sustainability action plan, um, it aligns with several of the strategic plan. Um, goals that we have, um. When the sustainability action plan got passed uh, last year, there was eight ordinance, eight ordinance is in the plan. And we said we would come back individually, and so we've come with the uh. E-PAC is a permanent committee, we came with the action plan itself, and then this is the next one on um. On the agenda for us, um. It was E-PAC's highest priority, we have, as you know, um, Councilmember Douglas mentioned and um, Mayor Protem. The E-PAC has a um, a lot of scientists and health professionals. And so that's why uh, anti-idling rose to the top um, in terms of like community health and things that are within our control. So the anti-idling was part of a bigger campaign, it wasn't just this ordinance, it was part of this educational campaign. Um, that we we had done flyers, we did uh, F A Q, we did articles in like uh, the parent. Newsletters that went out through the schools, we worked with several of the private and public schools. Um, part of the air monitoring program, we had information about anti-idling, um. You know, that the air monitors now, that's all live data that you can um, see, and so. That was, that's part of this whole um, campaign. And so beyond uh, just us giving people information, we also involved at Adams fourteen, we involved um. Several of the classes and the middle school, we incorporated like anti-idling and air pollution um, into the curriculum. And so the students at Adams fourteen developed different solutions for uh, air pollution. And we're gonna continue and uh, C D P H E was in on that too, they have a new educational department, Echo, and so we were working with them as well. Um, the signs again, this is a one of our E-PAC members' house, she lives right across from Sted. And it was a real issue because all the parents were lining up right adjacent to the houses. And so she she put up uh, one of the signs on her fence, um, but we talked to um, Sted as well. Um, about it and they talked about it in their newsletter. So the anti-idling, um, the majority of the front range communities have anti-idling. And then the state just passed a anti-idling uh, law as well, ours aligns with the um, the state law, um. Different uh, municipalities addressed differently, some do it by vehicles, some do it by time. And so, and then the fines vary greatly between. Uh, I think the highest one was uh, Vegas had ten thousand dollar fine. And Hawaii had a two thousand dollar fine, and where uh, Denver has a hundred and fifty to just under a thousand. And ours is um, between a hundred and fifty and less than five hundred. Um, and so again, the reason that this is important to our department and it should be important to the community is. You know, two of the um, biggest air pollution issues in our state are ground level ozone. And uh, P M two point five, which is that particular matter, and so um. We think with this ordinance, we could um, control some of the um. Exhaust within uh, our own community, um, the other day, and so this ordinance has gone to the um, city's attorney's office. And the police department, um. One of the other issues about anti-idling is it helps prevent theft of vehicles for people leaving their vehicles unattended. And so that's another, besides the community health, that's another um, positive of having an ordinance. And so that's.
All right, Councilmember, some questions for staff, Councilmember Teeter.
Yeah, I uh, I was all for this when it first come in, it uh. For saving for a number of years, and they've had this policy for the last twenty years, where your trucks basically shut off after five minutes. And uh, but uh, it does create some problems, that's great for the trucks that's running over the road. But uh, every now and then you get caught by uh, D O T's laws. That say after ten hours, you have to stop and take an eight hour. Rest. And if it's ninety degrees outside or eighty degrees outside, it's a hundred degrees or a hundred and ten degrees inside their cab. You can't get rest in it's that hot unless you got your truck.
So there's exemptions for extreme weather, um.
Right, so I think it said ninety and you're exempting in here, but even when it's seventy and you and you're inside that sleeper. And it's very hot, you cannot get a rest in here, I tell you. They they just don't work, it's stupid. Uh, then I noticed they got exemptions, if you got a dog in your car or in your truck, well, then you can keep it running. But for a truck driver, you gotta shut it off, something wrong with that picture. But that's not right, I mean, they should have equal rights with the dogs.
Well, one of the um. One of the strategies or the exemption is if they're in a designated truck stop. So so that that's.
Right, here here's another problem, and the truck stops now, you can, it's they they have heaters that that you can get from them. Uh, just like the old drive-ins, you know, you pull in there, you put your money in and. Or you give them your credit card, you've got your heaters and and you can cool it that way. And a lot of the trucks have what they call pony motors, and they're little generators, they'll fire those, well, those are noisier. Than the truck I went, many trucks, and and uh, and they're smokier. It it's like a running a, an old gas lawnmower, it uh. If if you're around a loading dock where you got ten or twenty trucks in there and everybody's got their pony generators running. And it just, you can hardly walk across there without the, it just stinks and it's gassy from from the exhaust. Plus the exhaust is down low, where the the truck's exhaust have stats. And they leave it running, it can be a lot cleaner. And the 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 trucks they have today, you can look inside their exhaust pipes and they're shiny on the inside. The old days, you know, that that wasn't that way, but it is today that way, but uh. Then the other thing is, we got a two-tiered system, you can see these dump trucks going down the road that are twenty years old. And and it seems like, I guess we've been nailing them here lately, but uh. Uh, in the past, I've seen them go down the road, nobody gets stopped saying, but then they'll pull over a. A Walmart or a uh, Home Depot truck and and uh, check them out, which. Usually no big deal, because ninety percent of the time they're out to standards. But it it's just they're two, there's a two-tiered system there, it seemed like they looked the other way for the. Uh, small businesses or the ones that looked like they're going broke, and uh, that's not quite right either, but.
Yeah, we're gonna fine tune some of the exemptions, because, yeah, that when the state law came out, that the language in the state law was a little different. Than um, the language we had in the ordinance, and so we're gonna work on that um, between the departments. Another um, option is, and we did this in Moab, because we had so many truckers. And we were right in the middle of like Denver and Salt Lake, and that was about ten to twelve hours, and so, yeah, so we had set up like a truck stop. That had auxiliary power and then there was, there was quite a few, I don't know what you called it, a pony motor, but. There was like auxiliary power units.
The same thing.
Colon heaters, um, storage air conditioners, um. And then the automatic engine um, stop and starts, and so that that's another thing that we could look at and um.
And and the trucks today, you know, the old ones had, you had to shift or they had grease in the transmissions, well, the trucks today have air in the transmissions. And they have air suspension, so so you have to take time to build up that air for that suspension, you got to trail around, it takes twice. Uh, then you gotta build up your air in your transmission and stuff, and the newer trucks will hold the air. I mean, if they're a year old, you know, that air leaks off in there and and it it takes a while to build that stuff up. You can't move your truck until you get to a hundred and ten pounds air pressure, so there's another problem.
So I think that was listed as one of the exemptions too, if you if you need, so there was probably a half a dozen exemptions, one is like.
Is that my time?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, do.
She's answering questions, that's fine.
I've lost you did on that part, but I have other questions on another part.
Answering questions counts, please say, it counts.
Does count.
Yeah, no, no, I'm saying she was finishing answering questions.
No.
I wanna finish.
Okay.
So yeah, so so there was about a half dozen exemptions and, you know, for, you know, like lifts. For, you know, law enforcement, for emergency vehicles, and so um, there are exemptions in there for diesel trucks that need. To to idle it to get that um, equipment going, and so those are all.
Yeah, there's a lot of different things, and it depends on, you know, the on metal truckers, obviously.
You know, Councilmembers have any questions, Councilmember Douglas? You mentioned back in.
Well, circle around and back.
Okay, yeah, I'll raise my hand for, again.
Councilmember Douglas?
So that was my big concern was addressing that the issues that might come up for the truckers. And uh, so if that's how everybody are and you're willing to really take a look at that. And address those and and work around it so that uh. We are. Knowing that uh, this could impact them negatively, if we could address that, that would be great.
Yeah, so the language from the state was idling when used to heat or cool a sleeper berth during a rest or uh, sleep period. At a safety rest area, fleet trucking terminal, commercial truck stop, or state designated location. And then there's some other language, but I think it it might be moot about um, within a thousand feet of a resident. So that's what we're trying to clear up, because like, we saw two different.
But then on the other hand, it might alleviate some of the problems that we have with with the truck idling. In our neighborhoods while they're waiting to do their business at uh, different places. In Commerce City too, so I don't know that much about trucks to understand how they operate. But and and. What shutting down would do to uh. Affect them in a way that they couldn't start back up again, probably, but I. I think these are things that we need to be mindful of and and look at so that we're showing respect to. Those who choose that as their profession.
Yeah, I think that's how the state was trying to address that thousand foot, because it in the language, um. Before the new law passed, it had like this thousand foot buffer, so that was what we're clearing.
Thank you.
All right, Mary, folks, hang on.
Anti-idling ordinance makes sense, except. Um, we have Dutch Brothers that has double lines. Going for a billion cars of people sitting there idling while they're waiting to come through. I noticed on your slide for Fort Collins, that it said that Fort Collins land use code. Um, actually addresses drive-through. And so they they discourage drive-through businesses, we on the other hand have two new Ziggies coming. Um, in northeast Commerce City, and they're both drive-through, neither one of them are places you can go into and sit. So we're actually operating counter-intuitively on our land use code. Um, I certainly understand, since I live near a school, the problems of parents uh, letting. You know, waiting for their kids to come and keeping the car going for air conditioning or heat, depending on the time of year. Um, it's a, it's one of those wicked problems, I would be fully supportive of um. Sinage that discourages idling. But until the city um, takes a leadership role in terms of uh, discouraging drive-throughs. I don't see how we can actually find people, you can, you know, are we going to give people a ticket? When they're in the Taco Bell line, because they didn't turn off their car every thirty seconds. I mean, I would think that would even cause more emissions if you turn off your car, turn it back, you can turn it off. So it's, I don't know, it's tricky.
So it's after five minutes, so I don't know how long it takes to get through the drive-through Taco. But um, I don't think it would, you know, but I I I honestly, I understand your point about the drive-throughs. And those were some of the comments that Libby has made. And it, you know, we we are looking at the L D C, so it's an issue that can get discussed when we discuss the L D C rewrites.
Councilmember, anymore?
You know, we talked about the big trucks, um, anymore, the land's too valuable and there's no truck parking facilities left. I mean, they're parked all over around North Fields, around, I mean, they park behind my house on hundred and twelve, they park everywhere. Where wherever they can park, and so they don't have facilities to go to. T A is constantly completely full, they got rid of uh, the pilot that was down there on Vasquez. Uh, with the reconstruction of I seventy, so there's nowhere for them to park, they have to take their break, they have to rest. Only thing they can do is operate their vehicle. We have people driving around with no license plates, expired license plates by two years. To me, it's an enforcement issue, if you if you can't pull people over because they're driving their vehicle with uh, expired plates for over a year. Uh, no plates at all, things of that nature, how are we going to enforce this? And if you can't equally enforce it, then I think there's a real problem, because you have people that are living in their cars with. The affordable housing issues in in the area, you can stop and 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 are they gonna get? The five hundred to a thousand dollar ticket or whatever it is, the same as somebody in the drive-through Taco Bell? Um, if it can't equally be enforced, then why have it? And if we can't enforce it at all, why have it? Because right now, we don't have enough cops to enforce. No license plates, things of things of those that of that nature. And um, you know, it's, to me, you can create all the laws you want, if you don't have the means to equally enforce those laws. You know, that part of it, it gets really frustrating to me is, yeah, sure, you want people to do a better job, you want people to be cognizant of their surroundings. But I drive past two seventy in Quebec every single day, there's fifty trucks parked in the. It's not even, it's not, it's a median for the, for I two seventy. And it just is ongoing, now there's motor homes and broke-down R Vs and. And you know, so are you gonna pull in there and start writing five hundred thousand dollar tickets, or are you gonna hit Taco Bell? I mean, so if you can't do both equally, then don't do it at all, and and not against it, I just don't see how you can manage. Not without some serious manpower to the police department.
So there, one of the exemptions is for the extreme weather events of like within an hour period, and so. If there's family and they're living in the car and it's extremely hot or extremely cold. They can turn it on long enough to heat up their car or cool their car, and so that.
I I get what you're saying, but hey, if if it's a, if it's just somebody that stopped because they needed, they were getting tired. You're gonna give them a ticket because they got their car running, because it's extremely hot or extremely cold, there's so many variables. That how do you choose? that how do you choose who gets a ticket and who doesn't? And so that, to me, right now, we can't enforce half the laws we have because we don't have the manpower. I just don't know how you can. Not that I'm against it. Again, if we had the manpower, but right now, we don't have the manpower to stop people that are driving without without tags on their car. How are you gonna, how are you gonna deal with, you know, going down that road? And um literally, our cops will not pull someone over with expired plates. They don't have the time, don't have the resources. So you have all the laws you want, but if you can't enforce them, then it gets, you start promoting people not following the law. So that that's my own concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Chikone?
I kind of wanted to piggyback off of that. How can we equitably look at it to not just eat and leave in that space where we actually are seeing kind of the sensitivity of houseless relatives living in their cars, things like that? But can we do like a tiered system? We know it's at schools and in other spaces that we could focus on and prioritize there, I suppose. And then it is true, there is no truck stops where a lot of people will stop at. Where can we combine with the city or in other spaces to kind of expand more of a tiered system to be more sensitive to that approach? Because I do, I agree with that. There is a lot of truckers. My dad was a trucker. And it's terrible. And it is honestly seventy degrees early. It does get hot in a cab. I was homeschooled in a cab. So I kind of do see where that's at too, where I don't want to exclude or target any community, but it kind of needs to be tiered to where there are ways that because of pollution, because of ozone, because of how much it contributes, we can at least prioritize where to either put anti-idling campaign.
And maybe we could look into where we could put a truck stop. I mean, the one that we did in Moab was with BLM, and we did it a little outside of town. And um it was solar and it had all the um amenities that they didn't have to use their um they didn't have to be idling, but they used these other, what do you call them? A pony engine? Yeah, they're here. Yeah, these auxiliary power units um to sleep all night. Because, I mean, Moab, it was always extremely extremely hot or extremely cold. And um yeah, maybe we'll bring that back to leadership and see if we can at least, you know, address it that way, or maybe address it phase one, phase two. Thank you.
Okay, councilmember Teeter, second time.
Yeah, just second time. I want I want to let you know that, you know, ice cream loads, they they gotta be at fifteen below zero. You let them get down to zero, you just, you're gonna lose your whole load because the ice cream gets soft and when you're bumping over the railroad tracks, your load smashes down and you can't sell ice cream if it's. Anyway, that's 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 another issue. And we talked about, you know, drivers need to use rest stops. Rest stops, Colorado's great plan was to close down all the rest stops. So there are, really, I think there's one that I know of. And just one, and for the whole state. I don't, well, there's two. There's one down south, too. Way way down south. And, you know, to pull into the truck stop like Sean said, they're all full. But, you know, the drivers know that, you know, you don't, you know, we need need to probably do something in residential areas. Uh, you know, truckers know that, you know, that that you shouldn't be idling your truck in residential areas. People need to sleep. And and so, but and so we probably need to do something about that. But before I run out of time, I need to get to this fourth whereas here. On the on the ordinance. Man, there's a lot of where is this in here? It says uh PM two point five Africans Americans are exposed sixty-four percent higher. And Asian American and Latino experience concentrations twenty-five percent to fifteen percent higher. And how do we base this? Then white residents have an average average exposure that is nine percent lower. I mean, we're all breathing the same air. How does that happen?
So this is the EPA statistics where they looked at, they look at that disproportionately impacted neighborhoods and who lives there and what the air quality is in those neighborhoods.
So we're gonna give preferential treatment depending on what your race is, what your color is on in this article form. I I can't support that.
That's all I got. Um, Jason, you have something?
Yes, Mayor. Um, just kind of hearing the conversation around the table. One, I do appreciate some of my reports, comments around enforcement. Um, just around expired tags and registration. That's something that we've actually stepped up and increased. I'm actually waiting on some numbers to come back from PD about what some of that increased enforcement has led to. Uh, I'll call it data, so I'll share that with council when I get it. But there there's a lot of good points that you all have brought up around the table that need to be continued to be baked into this idea of an anti-idling ordinance. And what this communicates to me is that there's probably a step that we're missing. And that's maybe broadening and deepening our education across whether it's commercial businesses such as drive-throughs and things of that sort, or truck stops or industrial and just in the general community at at large. We've been doing it for a period of time leading up to the idling. You've heard a little bit of that in the presentation today. But I think if we actually take a step back and ready to balance a plan for the next six months while working this out, we'll maybe have some more data, we'll maybe have some more feedback about what that comes together as it pertains to this ordinance. Because we want to get it right. And we're not gonna have answers to everything, but at least the increased education will get us somewhere closer to having some answers to some of this.
Okay, I appreciate that. Um, you have more things to say? Councilmember Chikone?
Yes, with that, I think we should, um especially to the last comment, um define and know what a disproportionately impacted community is and cumulative impacts are. Um, it's not giving preferential treatment. It's showing what is the most vulnerable populations by cumulative impacts. So it just prioritizes where the disadvantage is, so then it's already seen. And unfortunately, it's seen by race because of housing and all the other cumulative data statistics that you have to see on that. And unfortunately, systemically, it does break down by racism. So it's environmental racism, not a prioritization of those specific races. So I think it'd be really helpful about where those definitions lie and why they end up being defined in PA and spaces like that too for councilmembers.
Thank you. And then I just wanted to add, councilman, you're right, Bertin, I will ask.
Okay. I just keep thinking about the high schooler who stands in the line at Dutch Brothers on one hundred and four. That poor child is getting asphyxiated as all these, as all these cars come through. I mean, we need I don't know what to do about that, but it really is an education issue for for everyone. And how are we going to solve this problem? Thanks.
Sure. I just want to add that, you know, what is this on account of our budget? Because if we're doing all these efforts to make sure people are are not impacted by our our you know, as far as air quality from this anti uh uh idling ordinance, what is that gonna, what's a hit to our budget? And, you know, annually, is that part of the grants that you guys are seeking? And then when it comes to disproportionately impacted communities, it's a lot of red light communities. I mean, basically, that's where a lot of industry is. This is a red light. And people who cannot afford usually are in those areas. And there are accommodation, but usually it's more people of color that have been pushed those areas. It's not that they buy in the house, they're renting, because that's the only place they can they can rent. No one else wants to live in those areas. That's all. It's always been that way in the different metro. You go to any city. Um, greatest impact of the council population is people of color. Because everybody else could afford and 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 left. They can't afford here, they move out of the state. I mean, that's just the way it is. And that's why that's like that. So, you know.
Well, the financials have been very minimal. I mean, it was buying signs and um working with the school, like it was our time, working with the schools and doing these newsletters and FAQ. So, yeah, it's been.
Well, I just meant like the two point five, you know, because of because of industry. Can't wait for those people to add. So, but I I appreciate what you have here. And I I I I think I heard this is gonna be on next week. It'd be nice to, I guess, kind of come forward to city council on the agenda?
I think you were talking about the landscape as far as with that.
Okay, sorry. I thought this was, I was gonna say we can hold off on this and.
Yeah, I I I'd like to take a step back with the team. I I said, I think there's some efforts that we can do internally while we still feed into the the feed the responses that we heard tonight, some of the concerns we heard tonight into the long-term development around around this of its policy, whether it's an ordinance, where we look at enforcement, what is that enforcement, what are the exemptions? Um, because I think we can uh definitely still have an impact with education and engagement across the spectrum of our different users in our community. And also getting their feedback as well as it pertains to some of these things that may not be, you know, come to us at first, but it does come to you all and to them. So uh we'll let us do a little bit more work on that. Yeah.
All right. Thank you. All right, thank you very much. Next up is Jenna Han, the county for Public Works for custodial services. You call. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you.
She has something.
Push it down.
Down, down. Right there, up one. Out. And go to full screen mode. Down, right there. There you go.
Oh, I swear it's different every time.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pertim and City Council. Jenna Han, nice to see you all again. We are here tonight to talk about custodial services. So we will go through background information and then dive into a discussion about our current state of affairs for custodial services, discuss future options for the city, and of course, seek council feedback. So as you all know, the city manages custodial services for city-owned and operated facilities through an external vendor. And then we also supplement that work with uh internal city staff at both of our recreation centers. But that current model does rely very heavily on the use of that outside vendor. Now, during one of several custodial services discussions that staff had with city council in the past year, council did direct us to assess options for the future of handling these custodial services in city-owned and operated buildings. At that meeting, we were directed to look at bringing custodial services in-house. And we indicated that we would do that for the municipal services center and report back to council at a later date to talk about the efficacy of that model. Despite ongoing efforts to hire a building attendant at the MSC, the new position has not yet been filled. Shifting now to current state of custodial services, the city's current contract with key people will go through May of twenty twenty-five. However, that contract can be terminated early if desired. So this slide here illustrates the buildings that are serviced by key people and the associated annual cost of that work, plus the work that's supplemented by the building attendants at our recreation centers. So our average annual cost here is nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars per year for the current state. Looking ahead to twenty twenty-five, we do have two options that are financially sound ways to handle custodial services throughout the city. So option one, we can continue the hybrid approach that we currently have, that we just looked at. And option two would be to provide all custodial services in city-owned facilities in-house with city staff. So again, for option one, the total annual cost would remain the same, nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars per year. There are, of course, benefits associated with continuing that model. Um, those benefits include primarily that contractors have a larger workforce, so they're available during off-peak hours such as nights, weekends, and holidays. And then the disadvantages of continuing that model would be we have limited control over waste diversion efforts and limited control over hiring practices. In addition to that, we're not able to offer, excuse me, not able to offer opportunities for staff advancement within the organization. And there's also not an opportunity for staff succession planning. So for option two, again, that would be bringing the services in-house. Staff anticipates seeking the staffing needs outlined on the table here. And that proposal would cost approximately eight hundred fifty-six thousand dollars per year. So here's that breakdown for you, showing that cost estimate of moving the custodial services in-house. Our next steps here are pretty straightforward. If directed, staff will either issue a new RFP to continue custodial services with the existing hybrid model. Alternatively, staff can prepare to transition custodial services to the in-house model over the next several months. So certainly open to discussion. We'd love council's feedback on which of the two models you would like us to pursue for twenty twenty-five.
You can, or is that any questions for staff?
I would like to ask staff, will they prefer that? These are both can remember every day.
Uh, I'll speak for myself. So I did um in-house custodial services when I was director of public works for Volker County. I prefer that. I I would love to have in-house custodial services for us. Um, Jenna highlighted some of the reasons why for myself personally, I like to work with junior staff and grow them in the organization, grow them from custodian one, custodian two, supervisor, manager, maybe even into other areas in the city. So I think it's a great opportunity. Gives us more control over waste diversion efforts. Uh, we don't have that control right now. So I think there's a lot of benefit to it. I would love to bring it in-house.
Councilmember Chikone?
Councilmember Ford? Yeah, you know, over the years, we've had it both ways. I mean, for years, we had in-house. And then it got to be having trouble getting people in to perform those services. So we'll outsource. And we outsourced for so many years. And then gets to the point of, oh, we can probably do this better in-house. Then, you know, I I don't know why we go through these cycles, but I've seen it with almost everything in every department. We'll mow our own roadsides. We'll go to contracting. We'll mow our own roadsides. It's 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 just kind of a cyclical thing that that takes place. I don't care how you do it, as long as it's taken care of and and meets the expectation um that we need to meet. Um, you know, I I hate to to grow the staff exponentially, you know, I mean, um I would prefer to do it in a manner that is most efficient and cost savings for our residents. I think that's what we have to look at is, what's it cost our taxpayers? What are they benefiting from from the service? So best job for the best price.
And that was a big part of the cost analysis, you know, is the current work that's being performed too much? How could we turn that back to save money and still be efficient with our?
I mean, that's the balance that we need to have with the financial well-being of the residents' tax dollars. So best service for best price. If you can compete with um the private market, then show us that you can do that. If you can't, then let the private market do it and keep the cost as low as possible through RFP. Great. That's where I'm at. Thank you.
Councilmember Douglas?
I I would, and I always have wanted it to be in-house where we have, uh, we provide opportunities to people. Um so so staff indicated they would bring custodial services in. So it says staff indicated they would bring custodial services in-house for one additional city building, the municipal services center, early in early 2024, and we'll report back to council in early summer of 2024, which is right now. Despite continuous recruitment efforts, this new position has not been filled. Could you tell me about that recruitment process and why you're finding that you, or why you think you're finding that you are having difficulty filling this position?
I think some of it is because it's a single position. It's not a fourth program. So wouldn't be joining an organization that has a defined custodial program that you would become a part of. And I think that's apparent. So that's a part of it. And it is a difficult market to hire for. So we would have to be very aggressive. We want to bring on a work programming manager for this whole operation. And that person we need to be focused on. We just didn't have the resources to focus as much as we need to. And having one person come in and just doing this kind of a, let's see basis is tough to attract people.
I appreciate the answer. It's too bad we don't, I recently had some friends who went to Japan and they said that their preschool starts at two and goes until five at age, age of five, and that during those years, they teach them how to be good social citizens, pick up after themselves. So in their, in their schools, they don't have janitorial service. The kids are expected to clean up after themselves. And they don't have trash receptacles anywhere public. If you have trash, you take it home. That's where you get rid of it. And so we do a different way of thinking here. So it would be wonderful if we learn how to respect each other and take care of our own.
We, you know, we also want to look at providing the same level of service, but with some involvement, more involvement from staff. So there's no reason why staff can't take their waste bin to the end of the hall, put it in a common container, recycle bins well. So the numbers we're showing you, we think are very conservative. We think it's going to be less expensive for us to run the program. We want to be conservative. And we want people to participate. That's one phase. But the other phase is we want to move toward a zero-waste policy so that we're throwing away almost nothing and recycling almost everything, or diverting almost everything in the office space. It's doable. It takes some training and some knowledge, but we'd love to implement programs like that. Thank you.
I would like, I would be for this. I mean, we're just going to save $124,000 just as to what you just showed. And I think the, you know, some work, I think our boys as well, especially at the rec centers, they can do other jobs there besides, you know, you come in, do certain things you can do before you go home, make sure the bathrooms are swept, whatever. I mean, I've been in jobs where that's part of your job, you know, closing things down. This is your room to clean, whatever. Everybody just pitches in. And, you know, they should be part of that too. Not just having this staff, but cross-training because someone goes vacation or something. Hey, this week you're going to fill in, whatever, right?
Sure.
And it just makes it better cohesive-wise with all staff members. Supervisors can, you know, can initiate that program as well. So if we're going to be built at zero waste, we all should be on the same level.
Sure.
And no one should be above that. So I think from what I'm hearing, community likes your approach and follow it. Great. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, reports. Superintendent Roger.
Yes, sir. Not very much important, but there's a couple of things that this might be of interest. You're notified by the county, but also USDOT that a $4.8 million dollar raise grant was awarded for the reconstruction of IQ 70 and Vasco's Boulevard Cloverleaf interchange that will turn into a partial cloverleaf as well as implementing a new pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure doing around that interchange as it is. So that's important, both for the city and for the county as well. Our MIC3 tool trailer program is in full swing. We've had a total of 30 reservations so far through half of the year. That's an improvement over 2023 numbers. You all got a brief explanation of that back on the 24th of June. About the MIC3 update was again, just continuing good work there, trying to be able to help our citizens. With Fort Fest, we actually had thousands of attendees from across the city and metro area. This Thursday, July 11th, is our next Music in the Park Summer Concert Series with the band Thumpin'. That's from 6:30 to 8:30 PM. We're also holding third quarter boards and commission improvements applications through this Friday, July 12th. Interviews are next Saturday via Zoom, July 20. Last but not least, our economic development staff met with B-Side Capital to establish a connection and discuss collaboration on the Elevate Commerce Program. B-Side works to foster the economic growth of diverse small businesses by providing flexible collateral credit requirements. They also are focused on increasing accessibility and transparency in the small business, in small business lending to provide a pathway for wealth-generating opportunities. That concludes my report.
Thank you.
I'll be very quick. We're very close to hiring a police legal advisor, senior assistant city attorney position. I'm hopeful that I will be able to disclose more information next Monday. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Councilor Teeter, do you have anything?
No.
Councilor Shikam?
This Thursday, I think, is Wednesday, Thursday, the EPA regional meeting that's going to be at Wyandotte. So I was going to attend that. So I just wanted to say.
That's my form.
Yeah, I had a citizen complain to me about graffiti on 60th Avenue under the IQ 70 overpass depicting male genitalia shapes. They said it's been there like two months. I want to see the graffiti removed. They hate driving past it every day. Also, the same person was complaining about homeless encampment by Windens that has started to grow. And so just passing that complaint along, she wanted the mayor's phone number, and I said, no. I'll take it to the right people. So I saved you there, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
Thank you. Councilor Douglas?
Just attended the Rapids need to celebrate 4th of July. Wow, what a game that was. And it was really cool being down on the field, interacting with the fans and all of that and representing Commerce City. So that was a very special day for me. And never been to one before where the game was so exciting at the very end. And the fans were just going crazy. It was a great time. And I just say thank you to KSC for offering city that opportunity and for inviting us and making a part of the very special celebration.
Yes. Councilor McGee, do you have a report?
Nothing from me.
He said nothing for me.
Nothing? Okay, thank you. All right, I had a meeting with the board, Commerce City Chamber of State Executive meeting, and it went well. And to the Independence Day celebration at Dixporting Park. Great showing. Think we need to have, look at more opportunities the city can engage with the Rapids, because that's a professional soccer team. And type when, when Governor Ford was the mayor, we, we had a better relationship than we do now. And we changed that because it's clearly in our backyard. And it's the first time I did a video for the welcoming folks around the area to Commerce City. That was, that was fun to do that. Hear them rehearse these lines and get there and have this fellow property right there and, yeah, right? So, so, yeah, well, yeah, it was crazy. But I do appreciate, I appreciate, I appreciate the opportunity. And 4th of July was a little crazy. I heard that, you know, online, people are saying, how many people that cited? I want to hear what the city actually did as far as citations. I know there's more than four. And it's a lot too, because you, people celebrating their independence, how far can you go? And, you know, should we do a curfew? So you can pass that time no matter what. You get fined, because some people are lighting those things off, 1:00, 2:00 o'clock, morning, 3:00 o'clock. We have it on the 30th and 4th. We continue to do it for New Year's this year. So we have some a lot to talk about with our citizens as far as what our next steps are, because some people are just have taken to the next step.
All night Friday, all night Saturday, all night Sunday.
So the night, the night of July 4th, we had 51 calls, having asked the deputy chief for calls on additional days beyond that. But we had 51 called, we had 14, some is actually issued and written. But we also had 30 verbal warnings. And what we've actually come to find is that when we do go out on scene, right, we have to get there in time to be able to see if, then when we speak to neighbors, we have to have someone who's willing to report one during the main little pass. Well, hence then, those, that's where the 30 verbal warnings comes without once getting tipping a hand. So that we also want to make sure that we're protecting the neighbors who initially called in about causing an issue with the rules. So it's a delicate matter that we have to navigate. So when you think about it, 51 calls, 44 of those were responded to in some, some form and manner. Is it always going to be, this one is a tricky one, I will say nonetheless, right? Because to your point, we do our best in educating before. We do our best in educating after and getting it, attacking it, as I shared with, with Councilor McGee. I got one AM on a Sunday, and I saw someone in or around my area lighting a wall that wasn't there, right? So, you know, it's just one of those things that we're going to continue to, you know, stay on top of. We'll continue to do our best. And like I said, the next event that we have calendar is New Year's Eve. So, right, the conversations start now about how to address the problem.
But I also talked to Reverend that trying to get their paradox situation under control. And then looking at more into it, the area has over 500 holes, which is outrageous. Bad right here. Yeah. So you see, we should see where HOAs are at, because some of them are on water and take care of some of their issues. Because of increase, because, you know, HOAs, tab on roofs and everything, everybody, all their insurance has gone out, our tax has gone out. But that's all I have. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. See you next week.
Meeting adjourned? Oh, yes. Sorry. Seeking no other business, the meeting is adjourned. All right.